...of the Saebel Board of Education. Can everybody please stand and join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on our nation and our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Board Secretary, has this meeting been advertised according to the Open Public Meeting Act?
Yes, it has, Mr. Mackinon. Would you like me to do that reading now?
Yes.
At this point in time, we're actually going to read what the Board met in the executive session for as a new protocol. In executive session, under attorney-client privilege, the Board discussed the S E A grievances and potential litigation against the Cabo Ravino architects. Under negotiations, the Saebel Principles Association status and preparing for the Saebel Education Association negotiation. Under personnel, the Director of Special Services opening, Superintendent evaluation, and items on the agenda for hiring of personnel.
Mr. Gookle.
Mr. Bauten.
Here.
Mrs. Backer.
Here.
Mr. Bishada.
Here.
Mr. Brzezinski.
Here.
Mr. Syed.
Here.
Mrs. DePinta.
Here.
Mrs. Rakuya.
Here.
Mr. President, Dr. O'Fannin, we have a presentation this evening.
Yes, Mr. Mackinon.
Please.
I'd like to bring up Ms. Pam Gunther to give the award winner Erica Stolti her award for doing a great job.
Good evening, Dr. O'Fannin. Thank you, members of the Board and our administrators and community for having me here and giving me this opportunity to present one of our former students, Erica Stolti, who is a recent graduate of Saraville War Memorial High School. An award on behalf of the New Jersey Association of School Librarians. Last spring, I invited high school and middle school students to participate in a drawing contest to design a cover for our upcoming conference program, for short. And of all the entries that I received, Erica's was by far the most professional and the most well-designed. And the children were only told that the theme this year was inspiration, motivation, participation. Inspiration, because that's why our librarians come to our conference; motivation, because we hope that they leave motivated to try some of the new ideas that they learn about at the conference; and participation, because we encourage them to participate not just actively in the conference, but also in our organization as a whole and in their school districts as librarians. So, given that little bit of information, Erica submitted a beautiful drawing that began with an open book as the base and had several objects such as the Statue of Liberty, a pyramid, the Leaning Tower of Pisa, the Eiffel Tower coming out of the book as though it were a pop-up. And little did she know that one of our keynote speakers at the conference is going to be the master of all pop-up books, Robert Sabuda. So, I loved it for that reason, too. It tied in beautifully. I did ask her if she could just modify it slightly to incorporate a few more items that school libraries do offer and represent, and she was very gracious about modifying her picture and very enthusiastic and willing to work with me on it. So, this is the resulting entry that she gave us. And this will be on the cover of our program book when we have our conference in late November, early December. So, on behalf of the New Jersey Association of School Librarians, I'd like to present Erica with her prize, which is a $25 gift card to Hornson Noble, and thank her publicly and acknowledge the hard work and effort that she put into this, and wish her a lot of luck as she moves on. And she's going to attend Middlesex County College where she will major in art and then move on to a four-year college after that. So, congratulations. I just wanted to publicly acknowledge her because I think she represents some of the best that Saraville Public Schools have to offer and what comes out of that wonderful job.
Along the agenda, does anybody have any questions, comments, concerns about the monthly technology, the monthly maintenance work order reports that we're working on? Seeing none, Dr. O'Fannin, I think that brings us to your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mackinon. Buildings and grounds, these are all substandard rooms. Mostly that the toilets don't fit the little guys, that's basically what substandard rooms are, so we use those rooms, no matter, even though the toilets are a little bit too big. That's predominantly it. And some of the rooms we use at Wilson School are interior rooms that have insulation. So, it's not that the rooms aren't usable, but they were not intended and they have to be approved each year. Saraville Police is running its drills at the S U E S on the dates noted. Lighthouse Society is meeting with the fourth grade students on the date noted at the S U E S. It's a nice program and I wish them well. We're running a special program with St. Peters College once again to utilize the building and hopefully this year we'll run many different programs for professional development for teachers and staff. Any questions with Section A?
I have a question for you, Dr. O'Fannin. With the St. Peters College, they're going to actually teach college courses here?
Yes.
At the building?
Yes, graduate.
You don't have any affiliation with this college any longer? At one time, you were an instructor.
I do teach.
Do you teach at Jersey?
I'm not a full professor, I'm an adjunct. I teach once in a while.
Okay.
I don't teach all the time, but every once in a while, they ask me to teach a course. And some of our principals do teach and supervisors, even some guidance counselors also, and I believe some teachers may as well teach as well. But yes, we do at times, but I'm not. I don't work for St. Peters College on a full-time basis, I'm an adjunct. And it's rare, I haven't done it in about five or six years.
Have they decided about how many classrooms they're going to use?
I think this semester, they're going to do about five.
And when will this take effect, then?
September.
September.
Okay.
Dr. O'Fannin, just, St. Peters just recently went to being a university.
Okay.
For a clarification.
Sorry, St. Peters.
Do you know what the, did you negotiate a discount? Do we know what it is?
It's a one-third off the regular rate. I believe the courses are about 2,000, a 3,000 course, they're going to offer about 2,000. So, it's a significant savings for the individuals, for the S E A, and any teacher or administrator that wants to do them. Our real goal, it's one of the goals, I'm really trying to get a doctoral program in here. I'm trying to see if I can, you know, bring administrators from all around the county and the state to do a doctoral program. I know Mr. Agles is doing one up in St. Peters College itself, but they have different locations. I believe they have one in Monmouth County?
Yeah.
And I'd love to see it being done in Middlesex County. So, I think we'd have a few takers in this district as far as some of the principals and the supervisors I know, I think would like to go get their doctorate. It's only, to me, it's a win-win. Teachers getting a nice discount, and we're opening it up not just through administration supervision, we're looking to guidance, we're looking to reading, we're looking for an M E D, we're trying to expand the program, and then hopefully we'll go even further than that. I don't see any downside to it, hopefully.
Is it sure that our staff is aware of this?
I haven't gotten the brochure yet, but eventually I'm going to send it out. It's waiting for it to be approved tonight. I don't want to do anything without your approval. Thank you, Mr. Bishada.
And Mr. Banker. Finance B, 1 through 12 are our regular resolutions. 13 are the associations we belong to. On page 5 is our petty cash. Number 15 is the establishment of the new positions. And again, this is just for our position control, it's not like we're hiring new people, it's just that we're creating new spots to keep track of our position control. Disposal of some equipment is number 16. Now, we can get into the award of bread and a milk contract, some paper supplies, as listed, groceries, cleaning supplies, snack contract, those are all bitted out. Number 23 is important, that's our school resource officer at the high school and the middle school officer, which we ran for the last, I guess it's about five years now, we've had an S R O and a regular police officer at the middle school. Non-public aid entitlements, this is what we give out in textbooks and technology and nursing aid. There's a change order to the heating system for $5,100 at the middle school. New Architectural Group, which is, I believe that's D I, Architectures and Engineers, which is our new on-the-record architect. Now, I know, Mr. DeAndrea, you have an extra resolution appointment in this section?
Yes, and I apologize, strike the word engineers from 26. They are not engineers.
So, it's just architects?
It's just architects. Number 27, the Board of Education has requested to approve Change Order Number One to Safeway Construction Incorporated and the amount of $41,000 for the Saraville Middle School roofing replacement for change in roofing design.
Any questions with Section B?
I have a question. Number 24, that is our expense?
That's what we receive from the federal government. And then we disperse it.
Direct flow to a federal government.
Mr. Bishada?
Last year, I asked it, and I thought I'd put it on the record that the request to have it, not only for you, but for the other administrators on number 13, that, from my knowledge, the cost for your association membership. I'd like to see that, you know, that everyone knows what it costs, the district, you know, to have our three top administrators belong to these certain associations. You know, we're going to approve it, but what's the cost? You know, I know it's part of your contracts from all that, but...
I do know mine exactly. I don't know, I mean, Frank and I have spoken, I'm not sure about that. I know mine is full-size.
I believe mine is $805.
How much is it?
About $805.
And my association fees are 1% plus $100. That's 1% of my salary plus, I believe it's 100, I'm not 100% sure. I haven't filled it out yet. And my Middlesex County dues are 600.
Are you done?
Yes.
The, number 23, the, is this a contract that we have? Because I thought the police officer at the middle school was an hourly. Is this something, did we change this or are we doing this by here?
This is exactly, this is exactly what we did last year.
Yeah, remember, we had the agreement, we paid partial of it in order to...
No, 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 that's, yes, I'm talking about the middle school.
Yeah, the middle school member, there was a debate whether we were going to have one.
Right.
And it has to be four hours a day. So, whatever they, I think it comes out to, correct me if I'm wrong, $50 an hour. And whatever it is, it's $200 a day times 180 days.
Right, my question is, are we contracting for a year doing this?
For the whole year.
We're now, right, so we're guaranteeing a year?
Yes.
By doing this?
Yes.
Not an hour?
And four hours, four hours. And I believe it runs from 11:30 to 3:30 at the middle school, somewhere around there, because she'd rather, Mr. Kubat would rather have it in the afternoon, and the S R O runs to regular hours.
And for all these contracts that we handed out for low bidders, how many bidders do we get for these contracts? I see the same names every year. Is it, they always, we always contract the same people?
It depends on which one you refer to, but normally, when it comes to the cafeteria, it's two or three people because when they're closer, it's, their pricing is different. So, they have their local distributors. I mean, I have that all in my office, that's exactly who bids. But normally, it's no more than two or three, and some of them, it's only one or two at tops.
That was your thing, right?
I mean, but we do advertise it, and hate to equate, it's very much like transportation if you're on the municipal end, garbage picked up, people are regionalized, and they kind of carve out the state as the way they bid.
Okay, and I see we hired a paper supply contractor, since it always is a sore subject. Is the paper here yet?
That's not the copy of paper.
All right. So, you knew I was talking about copy of paper?
That's different paper. Why not? It's previous.
That's even the more important paper.
As someone else already asked me this evening, I rely on my central receiving person that when the stock supply is low, he gives me a call and we order the truckload as that point in time comes. If I recollect correctly, the last order went out in sometime in May for about $20,000 worth of copy of paper. So, I hope that it carries us through the opening of school.
Has it been delivered?
Yes, back, that, that delivery in May, yes.
So, the paper that was delivered in May is for opening of the school year?
Again, I don't go around counting where the boxes are. I rely on the central receiving and people in the buildings to contact us when they're ready.
But didn't we say last year, we were going to keep a better eye on that to make sure that it comes?
Yes, and I relayed that to the central receiving person to make sure that, and that's why during the year, he contacted me when he always got down to about 150 cases so that the order went out.
Right, but I think I remember, too, one of the complaints was, we didn't get it delivered in time. Could you just check to make sure that the paper gets here?
I have it down.
Did you? Then it'll be here?
Well, we haven't placed an order, that I know. But I have to check to see what our stock is.
Maybe we should just keep it up.
And the person has been doing a good job.
Okay, Section C, Personnel Non-Certified, there's an unpaid medical leave, an adjustment, a few transfers as listed. Approval of employment of following cooperative business education students as listed and some substitutes non-certified. Any questions with that section? With none, moving to Personnel Certified. Rescind the previous employment of the individual listed, individuals listed, retirement of Ms. Pelican, I hope she's feeling better, and I worked with Ms. Pelican for two years, and I know she's really gone, done a really nice job at the S U E S, and I'm hoping she's feeling better. And subsequently, I wish her a very healthy and happy retirement. We also have a resignation as listed, a couple of resignations, and moving down to the amendment to previously approved appointment of Marta Feliz to a Pace Program Resource Center. And another amendment, again, this is for our control roster, a child rearing leave as noted. There is a correction on page 10 or an addition, I mean, number 10, on page 10, I shouldn't say September 1st, 2012 through December 31st, 2012. That's an unpaid leave. There's also a pregnancy, some salary adjustments, moving down, some lateral transfers to different locate, different positions as noted, some personnel extracurricular assignments as listed, moving to page 11. The anti-bullying coordinator, the lucky winner is Ms. Seitner, Shediak, Affirmative Action, she's also the affirmative action officer. Some additional days we needed to complete the schedule as noted retroactively, some I E P meetings needed to be held, Ms. Strano was holding her yearly parent group meetings that she needs to be paid. And as you can see on pages 11 and 12 and 13, we've been busy employing people just today. I employed seven new teachers. I'm not sure all of them are on there, but we're going to try to get them off at September 4th. I believe I only have four full-time people left, of which two are coming in tomorrow, and I believe two the next day, so we should, hopefully should be finished by the end of the week or the beginning of next week. Those of the substitutes as listed. Any questions with Section D?
Page 9, number 7, you're amending an approved appointment to Pace. What was it from?
She was in another high school position, and we moved her back, we moved her into Pace. I don't remember exactly which position she was in, but we're moving her because the person that was teaching.
It was a regular resource.
It was a regular resource center. But what happened is we lost the individual who was supposed to teach Pace. We moved him back into the mainstream, and subsequently, we moved Marta. Into the Pace Program.
Okay, so she's the current teacher?
She, no, she's no, Marta Feliz was no.
She's the original teacher.
She was originally going to go into a resource, and then we moved her from the resource when the other teacher said, you know, I'm moving.
So, you hired her and moved her?
Correct, I moved her around. Yeah, we hired her in July, I believe.
I, sorry, I, number D 23, I'm going to abstain on John Julie's.
Okay. Make sure you give that to Mr. Trapp, make sure you give Mr. Trapp to Mr. DeAndrea saying those.
Okay, I think I just...
Already done.
It's already done.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question.
Yes.
On page 9, number 6, did we approve the replacement or did we put that on hold the last meeting?
Did we approve, did we?
Approved the replacement. Remember we talked about it?
I believe we did, and that we were waiting to the resignation. So, we actually put the card before it was.
Right.
Okay, moving to E, Policy. These are the Emergency Crisis Plan approval, Pandemic Plan, Integrated Pest Management, and the Revised Job Description as listed. Moving to number 5 are the job descriptions that we approve every year, there are no changes except for the one above. They are the same job descriptions that we've had, but we just need to approve the same job descriptions each year. If you move to page 18, that's our Memorandum of Agreement that we signed with the police force, Integrated Pest Management Coordinators as listed, and the Strategic Plan, which we approved back in March, we're reapproving it again, but we're approving it with the 2012-13 goals. Basically, the same thing, but we're just pushing it forward. I also have my Superintendent Goal, which is related to the Strategic Plan Goal. Any questions with Policy?
Dr. O'Fannin, under Policy, Houston update for the Board, the committee met regarding the competition policy. We expect to have something for you by the 4th. We've got a draft policy ready, it's about four pages long, and I think we've covered just about everything, right down to what happens if we have an individual who wins the National Spelling or Geography meeting. So, we've gone very specific to try to cover exactly what we want to do with each group. We just want to run it by the administration, and a lot of people in the last couple of weeks have been on vacation, so we haven't been able to have that dialogue with them. But we'll be wrapping that up this week as they come back and have a policy for you for the 4th.
Thank you, Mr. Sire.
I have a question. Could you just highlight what the changes were in the job description for Powers School?
Marilyn, just one, just a brief one, I think this is what you have.
The primary, the hours of the position, because the position will be following the contracted workday. The old job description, he was a Powers School teacher coordinator, which teacher only taught a certain number of periods, off the top of my head, I can't remember what it was, had to come over to Solover for part of every day and sign in there and put in hours. They are working on Powers School. So, we've done it differently here where the person will be doing the hours after school. It allows us to still have a full-time teacher here at the high school.
Is the 150 the same, the 150 hours, is that changing, or is that what we have now? Or was?
If it was 150 hours beyond their contracted hours.
So, it's the same?
Plus, we had more hours because they were also working during part of the regular school day, but we really needed that for the first year of startup of the parent board and so on, so we think that we can...
You could do it with less hours?
Right, right.
Okay, and if I recall, didn't we already fill this job? Does, do we need a resignation? Didn't we already approve appointing Marta Feliz to this job?
Well, we would have to, it was not...
The shortage?
It was a Powers teacher, Powers School teacher coordinator, so we'll have to accept, we'll have to get a resignation from him for that position. And then, this is a different job, and if you approve his job description, then we will be posting this job and look for someone to fill this particular job with the differences.
Okay, so there's no problem that we already appointed him?
No, because it's a different position.
But we're doing away with the other position?
Correct, correct. We're not going to have Powers School teacher coordinator, we will have him, and that's a good point. We can define that.
Okay, moving to Curriculum, F. We have no H I P for this month. Revised Curricula as listed. And I have one more that I'll be sending out probably tomorrow or the next day, so a few more of those. The 2012-13 Textbook and Supplemental Book List. Once again, nothing has changed, we're just approving the same list that usually goes out every year. Number 4, the marking period calendar is listed as such, back-to-school night is listed, early dismissal, delayed opening.
Never coming.
Mrs. Trapp?
I believe that we were changing the U E S, instead of the 26 and 27, to the 20th and 21st?
Correct, right. We thought that was in power, which Mrs. Trapp had actually questioned and pointed out, that in what was sent to the Board on Friday, it had the upper elementary school as the evening conferences being the 27th, which was the same night as the high school and project before. And I spoke to Mr. Fiori, who had actually come up with the schedule, and he said to me, no, it should have been the 20th and 21st. So, he sent me revised one, so we did change that to reflect where it should have been. So, it's not the same night. U E S and the high school are not the same night.
Great, thank you.
But the 20th is for that meeting.
Oh. Okay.
The January?
No, wait. It's the night time.
For what month?
For February.
For February? No, I'm looking at November. Which one?
The February.
Oh, okay, right. February.
Has our schools gone to the printer yet?
It is at the printer. We're using a different company this year because they came in at low bid. They were actually picking, they got the proof to me yesterday.
Okay.
We went, we're away, it's left for them to pick up this afternoon, so hopefully...
So, the correction will be in there?
Yes, yes, I did make the correction.
Okay.
And, I'm sorry, Ken.
Just to follow up to that, and I think I mentioned this last year as well, is it possible to get these things in for Board approval at the July meeting so that if there are any corrections, things we want to change, there's no risk that we're going to run into a situation where our schools are already in?
Sure.
And again, you may have already planned that because you knew our schools wasn't going to go out to the printer and go after the Board meeting, I just want to make sure that we don't miss it.
Okay, no problem. Right, and the February Board meeting is the 19th, so that would sound well.
So, it works out okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving along, number 5 on page 20. Again, these are just for regular and early dismissals, delayed openings. Number 6 is the Special Services placements approvals and different areas that we're providing services for the youngsters. Any other questions with section, that section? With G, Co-Curriculum. You have the Saraville War Memorial High School, a music department and band, these are the different competitions they're going to be in, in the auditorium, I'm sorry, rehearsals. If you turn to page 24, these are the middle school activities, Truman Activities, Olive Activities, the, once again, the Saraville Band Parents are going to host the Tournament of Bands, marching band competition on October 13th. Fourth Annual Junior Bomber Event is also listed as such, and also on page 25 is all the activities that are on tap for the high school. There is a volunteer coaching aide on page 26, and sixth grade orientation is moved, I believe, from this Thursday to next Thursday to try to accommodate all the construction at the, at the middle school. Any questions with that section?
Yes, I do. We talked about this a little last year, and since you have it here on the activities, what's the story with the senior trip at high school?
I can't answer that. I don't know. Mr. Brown is not, hasn't been in, and I really haven't talked to Mr. Brown about it.
Just want to make sure that if we change our direction on this, that it's done at the beginning of the school year, not wait until February, March to have that.
Well, my assumption is Mr. Brown is going to go through with it. I haven't heard anything to be negative, but I haven't heard one word since last year.
Okay, because I support it, I just want to make sure that...
Well, my assumption is Mr. Brown is going to go through it. I haven't heard anything to be negative, um, but I haven't heard one word since, uh, last year.
Okay, because I support it, I just want to make sure that we're not going to have any concerns about that once the date is booked.
When does he return?
He's here.
Oh.
He's been on, he was on vacation this last week, but Mr. Brown's returned middle of, I guess it was beginning of July, second of July.
Okay, so he'll be here for the start of school now?
Yeah, oh, he's here.
All right, great.
Um, H, uh, these are all the different lunch prices, there's no change, uh, Mr. DeAndre, is that correct?
No, no, no.
Okay, so these are all the same prices as last year. Um, number five on page thirty is waiving of transportation. Um, on page thirty-one are four field trips, and, uh, more approval for marching band competitions. That concludes my reporting.
Any board discussion on the agenda before I open up to the public?
Oh, yeah, I have one more question.
There's one more question, Mrs. Backo.
The cafeteria prices, a couple of years ago, we had raised the price because the cafeteria was losing money, and now for the past few years, they've been making money. So I would like to see us pass the savings off to the, the students. To go back to the way we had lowered them, we had lower prices before.
The only problem is, is that I wish I would have known that ahead of time. We generated a profit, uh, we're holding, stabilizing the prices in hopes of reducing some of those profits and eating back into the retained earnings, but I would ask that we look at that for next year, that's the goal, that, that's the goal of the board, to reduce pricing, because I would have to work up a whole bunch of scenarios to see, to ensure that we're not putting the system back into a deficit. So I would ask that we have that discussion for next year and see how the pricing affects next year's operations, since we're not increasing, and we do know we have an increase in salaries and also an increase in, um, supplies that came in through this year. So let, I'd, I'd rather not act prematurely reducing the prices and then put us back in the same situation we were two years ago.
Any other questions, comments?
See? I, I would agree with that recommendation, uh, the only thing I would ask is that, uh, you, I, I think we should give direction now for the administration to prepare that information, because my concern is what's going to happen is that we're not going to ask for it in April, May, or June, and someone's going to raise that issue without any warning at a board meeting, and we're not going to be able to make a decision next year either.
I would make a note.
So if we can, if, if we're all okay with that as a board, let's give that direction now, and then we'll expect something in, uh, maybe July of next year, following the close of the cafeteria this year.
Hopefully, we'll remember.
I'll be an opposite.
Does anyone have issue with that? Okay, that'll be the direction. Anybody else?
No.
Haven't seen none at this time, I'd like to open for the public, any questions or comments on the agenda that we just spoke about? Uh, please come up, state your name and address for the record, any questions on the agenda only. I will open up again for the public, any business that we have come before the board. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept and file a superintendent's report.
Sir, moved.
Any second?
Mr. Peckel, second.
Any roadblock?
Mr. Shalton, moved. Uh, Mr. Valka?
Yes.
Mr. Backo?
Yes.
Mr. Vashava?
Yes.
Mr. Rosinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Sayak?
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto?
Yes.
Mrs. Rukuya?
Yes.
Mrs. Trapp?
Yes, except for the, uh, station, thanks.
And Mr. Mike.
Yes. Mr. Sayak, any news coming from the New Jersey School Board Association?
Uh, nothing from New Jersey, just an update from, uh, from National. Uh, I'll be sending a resolution to the board, which I'll be requesting approval for on September fourth, uh, that deals with the federal government and the sequestration process, uh, whereby, if you recall, with regard to, uh, the federal budget, Congress could not make a decision with regard to specifically how they're going to try to shrink this country's deficit, and as a result of that, there was a built-in failsafe that said, everything across the board is getting a cut come two thousand and thirteen, and that it would include education, uh, right now, which is somewheres between seven and eight and a half percent, which obviously would affect the federal aid that we get, which would affect programs here. Uh, so National School Boards is launching a campaign, asking boards to submit letters and resolutions, asking Congress that while we acknowledge that there is certainly a federal deficit and a major problem and a fiscal cliff, that we believe that problem is best handled with a scalpel as opposed to an axe.
And my understanding is the Middlesex County School Boards wants to host their meeting here?
Yes, their October fourth meeting. Do you get to, well, yes, you can go to one wherever it is in the county, but in particular here, it's very easy. Yeah, so they're working through Dr. Alfano's office, I just got the request on that.
Committee reports, uh, Mrs. Backo, would you like to tell about curriculum and the meeting we had about scheduling, just kind of highlight those from the board?
The curriculum committee actually, um, met twice in the past month. The first meeting, we met with the high school staff, Mr. Brown, Mr. Rockmoy, Mr. Kowalski, um, as well as Mr. Aguilis, and we discussed the high school schedule and how it was coming along. We got good feedback that it was coming along quicker than it had been in the past. We discussed, um, realigning some of the high school electives, we talked about preparing for full-day senior, um, and we had another meeting, and we got some data on the AP scores, which were very good this year, um, we were doing well in high school with our AP scores. Uh, we also discussed how we reimburse for fours and fives, and we, we definitely changed that policy. And we discussed certain, you know, uh, things, we will meet again to, to go over some more of the, probably particularly focus on some of the changes that are probably going to be done in high school. We also discussed the block scheduling, and we're trying to get closer to that. Now with some, with the full-day senior, it appears that it'd probably be easier to do that.
And I think we also, um, gave some direction to Ms. Aguilis to further look into the, uh, bring your own device school, and how that would work into the environment here in San Diego.
Right, and we also discussed the online courses, which we're using for AP statistics, and possibly AP physics.
Thank you, Mrs. Backo. Uh, buildings and grounds, Thomas?
Uh, we had a meeting, um, building the grounds, uh, we discussed, we interviewed three of the architects, and, uh, the six, I believe, that submitted their, um, proposals, and tonight we, as a board, approved the DI group, architectural group out of New Brunswick as the architect for, on record for the Board of Education.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shad. Uh, policy, I mean, you spoke a little bit about policy, anything else?
Yeah, I, I spoke about the one policy, and the second policy that we talked about, we're, uh, in light of some concerns expressed by the Central Education Association, uh, we're looking at our technology acceptable use policy, and, uh, we've asked for specific input from them in the form of, uh, redlining our existing policy with the suggestions that they have, and then the committee will, uh, consider those changes.
Okay. Um, technology, technology meeting?
Yes, we did. Um, the installation of wireless is done, we should, we are up and running with that, there's one more switch here at the high school, I believe that needs to be taken care of. The configuration is done with that also. The virtualization is done, uh, the operating systems on all the computers had to be changed over, and that is just about finished. The new website, we have a contract for a new website, and new website should be up and coming in the next few months. Uh, we're changing our parent notification to Blackboard Connect, we'll still be getting notices, um, through phone calls, and bring your own device, we spoke about that as well, and, uh, administration is working to roll that out.
Um, lastly, redic- redistricting, um, we, we had a lengthy redistricting meeting, uh, a week ago from today, uh, with administration as well as, uh, a couple of teachers, uh, to talk about not only the direction we were going, but the timing of that direction. I thought it was a, uh, very productive meeting, and it's, it's, my, the request was, is that we slow the process up a little bit, uh, and instead of pulling the trigger on this in, in two thousand and thirteen, that we hold off the year of two thousand and fourteen, um, to do that, that was the request, uh, from the administration. Um, to include that, the, the redistricting is not off the table, we're still looking at a configuration, a grade, uh, uh, structure, whether it's going to stay K-three to K-five, one of the big issues that the committee's had, um, and also the administration has, is the, uh, the Slover school. Uh, we're, we're putting money into Slover, to get that, to make that a community school. Um, however we fall out with redistricting, that's going to be a player. Um, this board has made it very clear that we're advocate of a, uh, of a community school, and Slover sits, nestled pretty nicely within the Morgan community, and I would imagine folks that live across the street or around the corner, uh, would be very interested in having their kids go there, but our concern was, um, equitability to make sure that building is up to speed, um, in what the other buildings have. Uh, we took a walkthrough of the building after the meeting, and we did notice that they're all wireless, uh, I don't know the correct term, whether the routers or relays switches.
Wireless points.
Uh, points in, in all the buildings, um, all the heater ventilator units, uh, were being, uh, redone, um, there's still some other issues, um, cosmetic things, um, that need to be done, but, uh, we want to, um, get that building, um, pretty well up to speed before we start putting children into that. Uh, again, redistricting is not off the table, that's something that we're still looking at doing, and we'll have to do as the population within the community grows, uh, but instead of executing this at two thousand and thirteen, um, we're looking at moving to two thousand and fourteen, which will give us some more time, um, to look at it, to make sure that we're not overlooking anything, and that we're doing this smartly, and that whatever we do is going to be in the best interest of educating the elementary students. Um, so my recommendation, and I'm interested to hear from the other committee members, um, to the whole board, is that we go ahead and, and, and still press on, talking about it, planning, um, but pull the trigger in two thousand and fourteen versus two thousand and thirteen. Any comments?
Question?
Yes.
As of June thirtieth, we have fifty-nine ninety-six students in our, registered into our Central Board of Education district.
And that's an increase from how many from last year?
Hmm, basically, it's been, I think about three. It's, it's been fluctuating, I was just wondering, do you, as a redistricting committee, did anyone have a projection or a forecast for thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, what the increased enrollment will be in the district?
Well, we did have, have, the demographic's report that did all that for you.
Well, I'm just, I'm looking for a number right now that, you know, we, we can throw out here.
It's in the report.
Yeah, I don't have to report with you.
We did look, we, we suspected. Projection, but they did not put in the point. So when the point comes in, which is down the road, you're talking, what, like, ten years maybe, seven years?
Well, the residential development will probably start looking at it in one to two years from now, they're going to phase that in as they build that development.
Right.
Yeah, that's all, that was all considered. Um, we, we know that Eisenhower, the president of Eisenhower was at this meeting, uh, and he's obviously well aware what's happening inside his building, um, and the concern we had is that, you know, the whole idea of redistricting was alleviate the effect on Eisenhower, and he's okay for this coming September, and he has plans for the upcoming, and we may have to do a minimal redistricting by pulling some of those students that would normally go to Eisenhower out there, maybe perhaps, we talked about having an enrollment cutoff date, where if you enroll after a certain date that you won't be going to Eisenhower, you don't know the school, it has lesser capacity problem, uh, than Eisenhower does. So all those things are being considered as, and I think the more we talk, the better it is, because the more things we think about. Uh, Ms. Oberg from the S U S is a, a teacher, and has been, uh, with the initial cadre of UES, and mentioned some things that I hadn't thought about, that we start talking about people that are accidentally trenches, um, that's a good thing, and I think the more we discuss it, the more informed decision that we can make. So that's my recommendation, is anybody else, um, any comments, Mrs. DePinto, move like you want to say something?
I agree with the recommendation, I mean, I just don't see putting, you know, the cart before the horse, you never jump into a pub before feeling how hot the water is. You, once we go and make the decision, you can't go back. So I feel if we take an extra year, slow it down a little bit, look at all the recommendations, that way we can make an educated decision. If we jump in and start moving, we can't go back. So I think if we take an extra year, look at opening Slover, look at what we can do with Eisenhower, I think we'll make more of an educated decision before uprooting the whole town without just taking time, stepping back, and regroup.
I think being sure that we are equitable and working on keeping that up, uh, with computer labs, science labs, and, um, elementary schools, and planning for that carefully will, um, the extra year to do that planning will, uh, will help us.
And like I said, the, the grade configuration that will happen in two thousand and fourteen, whether it stays K-three or goes K-five for the district, um, still yet to be discussed. Um, there were some very compelling reasons, uh, about, uh, the four-five, and what the board, the committee focused on is how prepared, uh, of those fifth graders when they get into the middle school, coming from a four-fifth configuration versus a K-five configuration. And those things are, are things I think worthy of, of, of discussion, um, and that's where we stand right now. Uh, Mrs. Sayak, you have a question or comment?
Uh, yeah, I certainly support the recommendation, I think it's a, a, a good move. Uh, one of the other things that I'd like to suggest is, given the, uh, the newspaper article which appeared last week in the suburban, which seemed to indicate a different direction, uh, perhaps you and, uh, Dr. Alfano could sit down with the reporter, and let's get an accurate account of, you know, where, as a board, we're going to be going with this in terms of, you know, delaying and, and making a, uh, an informed decision. Uh, also, from, from all of the accounts that I've heard, both from board members as well as, uh, members of the administration, uh, the meeting that you had with the administration last week, uh, I thought was very well received, and I think that was excellent leadership on your part, pulling that together. Uh, I, I think it, it at least started the process of wherever we end up, creating some buy-in to that solution. Uh, again, we may not all be in agreement to wherever it is that we end up, but I think that at least the buy-in process has started, and people are going to start hopefully feeling ownership to, you know, whatever destination we eventually reach.
Anyone else?
I, I would just like to thank the, the committee, because I know you guys have worked endless hours on it, and the administration, and the teachers, and, uh, I just really appreciate all you've put into it, so thank you.
Well, it's a big decision, I think it's going to be the biggest thing, uh, in the tenure of this board, that decision is going to be made. So if there's, there's no other concern about that, Dr. Alfano, a couple of things that did need to do, um, the map that's on the website, I think we need to place that with stating saying that, you know, this has been pushed a year to the right, uh, because that map configuration will probably change when we revisit this a year from now, um, depending on what the build-out, you know, and the growth in the town is at that point. Um, and, um, I, I think, um, you know, an article in the paper, um, would probably be a, a good thing as well.
Can we do an all in favor on that, just to make sure that we're all on board as a team?
Sure, if anybody not in favor.
One thing I think we, we need to do other than the newspaper, I think most of the newspaper article actually had come from our public presentation that we had had back in May. I, I think what we need to do is to have another public meeting like we did in May, and I think that would be better than just a newspaper article. Because I think most of that data in that article was from, our meeting in May.
Yeah, matter of fact, I quoted it from the.
Right, like a lot of the things were in there, because a lot of the things, I didn't even remember, so it had to come from that meeting.
We can do that, it's a good input, all right. All right, so I think that's what we're going to do, not no.
Did we also want to look at expanding the committee to include, um, teachers?
Well, yes, I, I think that's a good thing, I think that was very valuable to us, um, if we're going to enact change, that's going to affect them, might as well get some info from people that it would be affected by it, I think that's a reasonable form of difference. At least, um, I think that was, I think that was the most beneficial part of the meeting. Good, excellent.
I have a question for discussion, if you're ready for that.
Yes, Mr. Shad, what was your?
Well, one of the issues that pertains to the community, especially with the bus routes also, is the, uh, if you live in town, a lot of people know there's a hole in the wall, Ernston Road, the, the issue is that, has there been a confirmed date when this thing will be completed, because, as Stairwoods Parkway Homes over there and other areas, uh, we still have to provide a busing route through that area.
The planning board was briefed that the, the goal was Labor Day, the Labor Day was the goal, to get the rest of that intersection open.
You mean, are, the bridge is going to be?
Well, to get that roadway open, I don't know.
I think that was the goal.
The goal, well, I don't know.
Because it's going to have to be opened and shut down several times, though.
Tom, um, if, if I could, Mike, I know discussions that I've heard is that they may start opening up the road, um, to allow traffic flow, and then close it down again periodically to finish it off. So although it may open, it may not be a permanent opening, and then they're going to close it down again because, um, the bridge still isn't installed, and that's the biggest part. Uh, I do know for transportation purposes, when we went out to bid, I believe that the bids, uh, were out either through December or January for those routes that we're accommodating those walkers at this point in time. So we're, we're, we're trying to get information also, because we may have to adjust our bids, uh, for a longer period of time, but the last I heard was that they were going to, it may open, but then close again as they move, uh, forward with the progress, but I have not heard of, uh, the Labor Day opening at this point in time from anyone.
Lastly, the, uh, I meant to talk about this redistricting, do, do you want me or someone to engage with the township to look at the possibility of the administrative offices on the third floor of, um, the old Washington School? I thought we were talking about more. We have to take a tour up there, um, now you're going to give a shot. I mean, that's, it's a vacant building, that might be something that we can take a look at, um, I will engage the mayor and see what he thinks about that. Lastly, Sable Day, Mrs. Trapp. We have not gotten your annual.
No, I'm not. Well, it is September sixteenth, and we're looking for a vendor to donate, because I don't believe that we're allowed to give any giveaways. So we have a, right, we have, all right, we have, well, I was hoping that retirement there, so yes, we do have a.
Yes, we do have a vendor who is making something up with our, our name and our web address and their vendor name.
And it's Sunday, September sixteenth, so I'll send out an email shortly and ask people to pick their times and hope to see a lot of people that day.
Okay. Any other discussion before I look up?
I just want to say, I just have a budget concern. Dr. Alfano had sent out an email that due to some hiring, we're two hundred and forty thousand dollars over budget. So the recommendation was to cut the budget, the technology position, which wasn't going to cover most of it. I just wanted to know, do you have another recommendation, or are you going to come up with a recommendation for the other shortfall, or are we, is your plan to wing it for the two hundred thousand?
I don't want to say wing it. Minio and I are looking at many different counts, trying to figure out, it's real early in the process now, so we're hoping with some, you know, we've gotten, like I said, a few retirements over the last month or so, and hopefully with the new people, we can make up maybe a hundred thousand of that, and then look at the other accounts as the year goes on. And hopefully, we still have a lot of supply of money, we still have a lot of tax money, we still have a lot of equipment money. Worse come the worst, like we do, like we used to do, is we might have to shut down purchase orders a little bit earlier if we got a bid going to the red. I don't think we will, but like I said, we have, we had a lot of people either retire in this last one or have left that were making a little bit of money, but we made a little bit of breakage the last few days.
I can assure you that the breakage we're going to see this year is not going to be anywhere close to what we've seen in prior years. I did my last update earlier today and incorporated a good portion of the people that are on tonight's agenda, and if I recall the bottom line number, I'm estimating that we're only going to have breakage around two hundred and fifty thousand, if that, and it depends on how many of the open positions, when they get filled, and that work price. So it's going to be tight, and keep in mind that even as we develop the budget, we were cutting some of those retirees out of the budget.
Right.
So we started to hit that early. It's, until everyone's in place, I have my spreadsheet that I'll send out to the committee that shows you all the line items and the breakage once all the positions are filled.
Right, but my concern is we have that breakage every year, so that's not really different, and since it's less this year.
I know, but I'm just saying, because of all the new positions, it's eaten, it has truly eaten into a lot of those retirees and brought that number down. I don't recall ever having breakage of only about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in salaries after we were done hiring seven, eight hundred people. And we've never been that much.
Could, is it reasonable to expect for our October meeting that you could come up with a resolution on transfers that would get the two forty to be where it needs to be?
Well, right now, I have it in, in the salary lines, we're okay, because the breakage is working its way back and forth.
Well, it's the only place we run up, because all you did was hire, hire faculty.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So we're covering it within, just the breakage that we have normally seen in prior years is a much lower number this year because of all the new positions we hired.
So where we may run into trouble is with providing tax relief next year for next year's budget is what you're telling me, because the?
A pleasure reading my mind.
Right, but that's why I, I get that. So I think if we're, the school year didn't start yet, and we're already out two forty, I think we should start looking at it now and not wait until June when we realize, oh, we're out of that money.
And again, until we have all the staffing in place, until I have my health benefits in place, there, there is still a lot of other things sitting out there that I have to look at before we start making premature decisions on what to do. I mean, I still have the all-around staff, all the new staff that we hired aren't coming in with family coverage, and a good portion of them that have left. So until I get my final medical bills, they're trickling in, but they're not really the final, because not everybody's enrolled. You might find some breakage in that area and other areas of like-out. I've already noticed that based on what we budget for utilities, it's, what I budgeted versus what we used last year, there's, there's a good delta there. But we didn't have a bad winter last year. We didn't have a bad early spring or spring season. So all those things start to factor as the year go on, and as Dr. Alfano indicated. Once we get all our orders in for the summer, because they're still trickling in, let's finalize our staffing, that'll definitely give us a better idea as to where we are. And hopefully, by the time my board secretary's report is out for September, October, you'll see a good idea of where we're going to be on the known information that we've had at that point in time.
So for right now, the only thing you're doing is not posting that type of stuff?
Probably, that's the only position.
Because most of what you said is something that occurs every year. I don't ever remember starting the year like this before.
We're always a few over. Last year, we were a few over in special education, because I remember you asking the question.
Right, but not to this time.
Right, now that's why I'm slowing it down. And I'm also, you know, we're also, like I said, we're going to take a look at, it's still very early in the year, you know, it's an eighty million dollar budget. Well, I'm sure we can make it up, but let's just see how the, how the year goes.
Any other questions? My compliments to the studio staff, these buildings that we're on today, it was great. I don't know how long after school starts these schools will still look like this, but they look very nice.
I can tell you, Mr. McEnone, I've toured all of our buildings there, they're all in impeccable condition. We're ready, we're ready for opening, except obviously the middle school, which is still under construction.
But we'll be open, I'm tying this down.
We'll be open, we'll be clean, and we've already got a plan in place.
With new patio, new roof.
New patio, new roof, and new heating system in the D wing.
Very nice.
A lot going on this summer there.
Mrs. Backley, did you have something else?
Yes, being that this is Mrs. Duffy's last meeting, I just wanted to wish her good luck in her new position and thank her for her years of service here.
Thank you. At this time, I'd love to open up the mic for any business that may come forward. If you have any questions, comments, concerns, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address to my records.
Porta Kill Combs, twenty-two Schmidt Street. I heard the comments by Mr. DeAndrea about the school lunches, and speaking to a few grandparents and parents, in some communities, they reduce the lunches. And there's been a lot of issues in the newspaper about obese children and what they're doing. And in many communities now, they reduced it to total skim milk and changed their menus and increased a lot of fruit and vegetables. Well, speaking to the parents and grandparents here, they said the menu has not changed in almost twenty-five years since Ms. Jenkins took on, and even prior to, it's the same menu and nothing's changed. And even speaking to some cafeteria workers who have been here for almost twenty years, said their menu has not changed either. So I think the board should look into it, and what, especially now with nutrition for children. And I noticed here on the price list, even Snapple, whatnot, I mean, and some of it is even excessive for children. A dollar and a quarter for a bottle of water. I mean, a bagel, a dollar and a quarter. And many received reduced prices in communities. I mean, times are hard for parents here now with several children in school and for the children to buy lunch. I know probably if they qualify, they receive the reduced or free lunches or free breakfast, but I think you really should look into it. Is there any comments from the board, how they feel about their menu?
If I could before, yes. One thing I can assure the board is that Mrs. Jenkins does abide by all the school nutritional guidelines.
Yes.
And she has to. We have audits done by them, so I can assure the board that all the nutritional guidelines that we're required to follow are being followed. As far as comments about no changes in the type of food we, menu, I mean, this high school went through a major transformation two years ago. And the other schools, from what I understand, Board Member Incorporated having yogurts brought in, yogurt machines brought in, and things of that nature. There may not be much of a variety at the elementary level, that I would probably tend to agree. You're limited because of the types of meals we're serving there. They're being prepackaged at one location and being brought, so I would probably tend to agree that maybe the selection at the elementary levels have not changed much. But I believe that the U E S, the middle school and the high school have seen some changes, and especially, I know here, have seen changes in their offerings and what they're doing. But as far as nutritional guidelines, I can assure you that Mrs. Jenkins is abiding by all of the nutritional guidelines that are out there.
Could we get sample menus, just to see, could you get a sample?
Usually online. They run online for a while.
Yeah, but they're never updated. I've gone on there before and.
Each school has, website has monthly.
I've tried once before, and they were not updated. Could you get a sample?
Apparently, a retired teacher had given Mrs. Jenkins three different menus from her grandchildren's schools in three different locations throughout the state of New Jersey, just to show in a variety of what other schools, and in fact, even lately, Spotswood School. And they had a more diverse menu, a different menu, more nutritious, and it seems like it's same old, same old. And that is the complaints I'm hearing from parents, grandparents, and they say it's same old, same old. It hasn't changed.
You don't know what type of equipment they have that they're supplying. We don't have full functioning equipment at our elementary to serve maybe some of those types of meals. So when you're, and I hate to refer it to as a boxed lunch, but when you're looking at a boxed lunch that has to be transported from one building to another, that plays into what you can serve. Now, if Spotswood may have full functioning kitchens at their elementaries, that allows you to have a diversified type of menu, because you have a functioning kitchen. I looked at our menus, and my children attend the public school, and I can tell you, the menus aren't that much different. I can tell you that pizza day is every Wednesday for my kids. My one son, is that the only thing he eats, and we know Wednesday's pizza day. So it all depends on what you're offering and what equipment you have in your facilities to accommodate those type of meals also. So you just can't say they offer it. You also have to see what do they have as far as equipment to make that offer.
Well, I recall when one of the cafeteria workers left, that they hired three people to replace her, and I was told it was state law or mandate, Ms. O'Berlin told me this at a public meeting, that it was required by law to have a cook in each school. So that's why they had to hire the three supervisors, so-called cooks. And they said to rotate, because they didn't have enough. And that's what she told me, it was state law, and they hired three new people to replace one who retired. And that was Mrs. Adkowski, when she retired. And that was a few years ago. And also, the, apparently, the yogurt machine, brand new, wasn't working in the high school. They said that wasn't up to par. On a different subject, I think I gave a note to Mr. McEnone about an editorial.
I, I received something in the mail when I saw the return address, I threw it out, so I didn't.
Oh, I'm sorry that you did. Because maybe I should read it to you, because it's quite important.
I did read it, and actually, I subscribe to that paper, so I saw that article in the paper. And we don't have that following, so.
Oh, well, we most certainly do, because I've attended, there are many two closed session meetings, this is the first time I ever heard Mr. DeAndrea say anything about the minutes of what transpired at closed session meetings. And in this editorial, in Clinton Township, the Huntington County Prosecutor's Office was coming down on the Board of Education for not holding their meetings proper and in closed session meetings and not abiding by the transparent law of an Open Public Meetings Act. I've attended many meetings through the Board of, from the council, and when they go into closed session, they state what they're going into closed session for, and when they came out, they let you know of any business transpired. So apparently, this board, and I've said this before, uses the closed session meeting as their own personal agenda meeting, and that shouldn't be. I've heard Mr. Seack, when he wanted a presentation of a report on the, what was it, the Board of Education's self-evaluation, and you wanted the evaluator, and Mr. Alfano stated, well, maybe we could do that in closed session. So apparently, a lot of things transpire in closed session that shouldn't. And I think it's just keeping you on your toes and aware that Big Sister is watching. Thank you.
Mrs. Kill Combs, please don't avoid.
Okay.
I was going to answer the questions about the price of food and those types of things, but this seems to be more interesting to me. However, as far as the cafeteria is concerned, I've gotten no complaints about cafeteria food. And if you talk to students who a year before this was redone and eat here now.
Oh, the high schools and true. I agree.
Sure, absolutely. And the other thing about the price differences of food in other districts, it's interesting because I studied this a while, if you look at those districts, those are districts that went ahead and outsourced. And this board has made a conscious decision out to outsource to keep our cafeteria people as employees of the district, which everybody understands is more costly. So reduce the price of the meals could be problematic in that area. Now, as far as, I'm, if anybody, I've been watching you now for seven years coming to this microphone, and some have asked me, can, Mr. McEnone, can you use one word to describe Mrs. Kill Combs? I would say consistent, because you consistently come up here and just say things, and I don't know where it's coming from. I've been on the board now, I think this is my seventh year, I've never seen you in one of our closed session meetings, but it's amazing how you know what goes on in there.
Once. No. Once. I know nothing what goes on.
I didn't interrupt you, let me answer this, because this has been something that you say every so often, and I know when you come up here to talk about that, there's nothing else going on in the district that you're concerned about, so you bring this old thing up here. And I mentioned it to this board several times, and I polled everybody on this board, we do not, and I'm saying this in the public, in the cabinet, we do not violate the Open Public Meeting Act in our executive sessions. Now, if you suspect other worries that were violating law like this school district, I would encourage you, matter of fact, I would insist that you go to the prosecutor's office and make a complaint, because I as the board president would entertain an investigation on how we conduct our closed meetings. We have an attorney present, and he keeps us on track, and we monitor ourselves and what we do. We take no action.
I know, I discussed it with Mr. Bush several times. In fact, I alerted him about Mr. Paff, and that was when he requested himself to be on the list. But one thing I have to admire in over the years is that there is more dialogue before, even from committee reports, but there was no open dialogue. And it's certain things that transpired, it's only what was on Mr. Alfano's agenda, and that was it. And I've been attending, planning, I mean, Board of Education meetings for, oh my goodness, over thirty years.
Oh, no.
And it's a history, and you follow it. And I'm sorry if maybe you dislike that I come inconsistent, but, Mr. McEnone, you have discouraged a lot of people from attending meetings and then come up to the mic, to come up to the mic. They were intimidated, insulted, even former PTO presidents, and you don't see them anymore. But I'm sorry, you can't do that to me, and I'm like a bad penny, I keep turning up and turning off, but, sorry.
Mrs. Kill Combs, you're always welcome to the microphone, I actually enjoy verbal jousting with you. But if people are intimidated because I'm wrong with the facts, so be it, okay? I've never been rude, and I've never been insulting to anybody.
Oh, yes, you have been. Mr. McEnone, very rude.
I've had this conversation, well, not as rude as you have been to Dr. Alfano and other people up here, I've had this conversation with my friends that have been council members. I'm not going, I'm going to protect the board, and I think that's why I've been the board president now going on six times, because I protect the board. If someone's going to come up at the microphone, like you or someone else, and question our integrity, our honesty, or call us crooks or anything like that, I'm going to defend the board, because I take that personally, okay?
I did not say you were dishonest and called us crooks.
You've implied many, many times, just coming up here saying that what's going on in there is suspicious implies that. And when people hear that, and they hear that often enough, that's what they assume.
Well, Mr. McEnone, this is the first time that Mr. DeAndrea ever gave a report of what transpired from closed session with the results from the minutes.
Good job. Thank you for your direction, Mr. McEnone. No problem. The minutes, the minutes are public. Now, I will ask again to my fellow board members, speak. speak, do we violate the Open Public Meeting Act enclosed by making decisions and talking about things that should not be addressed in executive session?
I'll answer and say no. And I'll also say that in the beginning of our meeting, we open our door and we share with the public, which generally there's no public, what we're going to discuss in our meeting. I, I do wanna go back about the cafeteria, but you could finish that.
Any questions? And also, you mentioned Mr. Path, who's a public advocate, and he's been on this Oprah issue. When you brought him here, or clued him in to go look at Sayevul, he came, he sniffed around, and he went away. Okay? There is no violation of the Open Public Meeting Act on this board and that one. And I find it pretty interesting that last year you had no problem. Last year when I was in president, there was no problems, no concern about what's going on in closed, although we did nothing different. Now again, you're back up to, you're doing something inappropriate, enclosed, you're violating the Open Public Meeting Act. That's a sacred trust.
No, I'm not, I'm just giving you a heads up not to.
You sent me the articles, and the article you said, you told me, and you implied. I wish I, I didn't throw them out, but I did. You said, share these with Dr. Alfano and, and Mrs. DeAndrea because Sayevul is going down this path, and blah, blah, blah. I think you signed it to local GAT five, Portman Kilcombe, yes. But if you really believe that we're doing something, and you as the Sayevul self-proclaimed public advocate, I would suggest you go to the prosecutor's office and file a complaint.
But I'm just giving you a heads up.
No, 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 you have said this too many times, and I insist as a resident that you protect my interests and go to the prob- Matter of fact, the next meeting when you're here, I'm gonna ask you for an update if you want to add and follow those complaints. Because I'm very interested in what you think is going on there. And if they investigate and find nothing, and then we'll deal with that. But you keep making these accusations, Mrs. Kilcombe, and it's based on nothing. I mean, it just, it just gets old, but.
I have a lot of investigators in my office.
It's very, it's very colorful. And I assume now your, your interpretation of my response to you is that I've been insulting and condescending and?
No, I'm used to it. That's your norm.
Okay.
I think that must be your military background, too.
Yes, it has served me well, thank you very much. Anyone else in the board that'd like to speak? Please don't be intimidated, please come, we're interested in hearing anything. If none, I will take the motion for adjournment. Oh, Ms. Trapp, did you wanna say something?
Yes, I, I would like to agree with Mrs. Kilcombe. There was something, when, when I was going over the cafeteria report, I was thinking a dollar twenty-five for water. I thought that was a bit high. I don't know what it takes to change that, if we should leave it at that. Maybe for the next time that we'll look at that.
I've already marked my calendar to set up the meeting.
Okay.
I, I showed it to Mr. DePinto.
I would like to take a motion for adjournment.
I would like to invite everybody. We have cake and coffee for Ms. Duffy, for her leaving. And I invite everybody, we bought a shoot gig, so if you'd like to come.